Okay, I will call the Wednesday, July 28th, 2021 Ames Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting to order. The zoning board of adjustment is a quasi judicial board created by the city of Ames. The board's purpose is to decide on applications for home occupation permits, special use permits, exceptions and variances to the zoning ordinance, applications for conditional use permits in the floodplain, requests for reasonable accommodation because of handicap, and appeals of the decisions of the zoning enforcement officer. As a board of the city, we welcome all testimony. We make our decisions based on the facts and evidence as allowed under city code and presented in open meeting. Testimony before the board must be given under oath or affirmation. If the proceedings become lengthy, we may ask that testimony be focused on new facts or evidence, not already presented. We ask that you come to the microphone at this podium if you wish to speak so that your testimony will be audible and maybe record it. Before speaking, please complete an orange information card, which are in the hallway, right? And on the podium as well. And you can hand it to our recording secretary. When you're testifying, you will need to state your name and your address. And please address your remarks to the board. We also ask the proceedings be orderly. The zoning board of adjustment is an independent volunteer board of citizens. We are not part of the city administration. We are served in our efforts by Jane Chang, Assistant City Attorney, Ray Anderson, and Justin Moore, city planners. And I haven't met you yet. Amy Colwell. Thank you, Recording Secretary. The order of proceedings for each application will be as follows. First, an oral statement summarizing the issues and procedural steps will be presented by staff. Second, testimony and evidence will be presented by the applicant. Third, testimony may be heard from any member of the audience who wishes to speak for or in opposition to an appeal. Next, the board will give the applicant and city staff an opportunity to present concluding summaries and arguments. And finally, the board will discuss the issues and evidence and come to a decision. Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes of the meeting of June 23rd, 2021. Are there any additions or changes? Hearing none?
Move approval.
Okay, that is motion by Bowers, second by Schneider. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a request for a special use permit to operate a daycare center at 2009 Burnett Avenue in the RL Residential Low Density Zone. Justin?
Thank you very much. All right. So, yes, as we brought to you this evening, we have a request for a special use permit to allow a daycare center at 2009 Burnett. You see there the location. It is located just north of the intersection of 20th Street and Burnett Avenue. The home, rather, the house is located in a low-density residential zone. This is an RL designated zone. Most of this neighborhood was constructed in the roughly the 50s and 60s originally. The house is a 2,400 square foot house. It sits on a little over 8,900 square foot lot there that you can see. So, the applicant has come forward to us with this request in response to an inquiry that staff made. We reached out to the applicant earlier this spring in regards to a concern that was brought forth to us from a nearby resident in the neighborhood regarding traffic and whether or not the home was occupied by the daycare operator. So, we took a look at that and looked into it and got in touch with the operator. And through our discussion, as one of the routes to applying to maintain the daycare as it is and where it's at, they have chosen to submit a special use permit. And so, this would be for a daycare center at this location. Just to kind of give you a little bit of perspective, daycare operations are permitted as home occupations in situations where they are incidental to a resident living in a home. So, there are daycare centers that can be permitted through permitted home occupations, which are just a staff-level review. Then there are also special home occupations to allow daycare centers, which are a board-level review here. But those also require the operator to live at the residence. The history here, this address was issued, a special home occupation for a daycare to the previous owner. The applicant inherited the business from that owner and so has been continuing to operate the daycare there since. However, the operator does not live at the home. So, I'll just briefly kind of go over our findings really quick here in the report. I won't read through every one, but I'll just summarize in general. So, we take a look at the findings that are in Chapter 29, Section 1503-4. And I will clarify, there is a typo there at the top above the review criteria, below applicable law. It says for A, C, and E. It should be A, B, and E. So, the C is another section that's not relevant to this. So, just for clarification of the board. So, those are the standards that we look at, general standards, also residential zone standards. And then there is an option for the board to put any conditions as it may see fit on a permit. We did have a few different inquiries. We actually had two inquiries by phone that inquired, there were neighbors that inquired what the case was for tonight. We also have one written statement or letter that was forwarded on to you that you should So, in our criteria, as I said, we do look at general standards. In the general standards, after staff took a review of what the applicant had submitted, we did find that there were three of those generals, or rather, sorry, two of those general standards that we found did not meet the general standard criteria. And those had to do both with harmoniousness with the surrounding neighborhood and then also with the processes and activities, which particularly were the production of traffic from our standpoint. Then in the residential zone standards, we also had two standards that we found that did not meet the residential zone standards. And those again were the standard of not creating excessively higher levels of traffic than the predominant pattern in the area. And then also the standard in two there, which again dealt with the predominant traffic pattern and kind of the daily traffic pattern that would be expected. So, with that, all the other standards we did review and we found that they could be found to be met. However, given that those four standards did not meet both the general and residential standards, we did, in our recommendation or in our alternatives and recommendation to the board, we did recommend alternative number one there in the report due again to primarily the concerns over traffic and the fit in the neighborhood. To kind of give you a little bit more background too on our parking standards, so we don't have an explicit parking standard that our ordinance enumerates for daycare centers. We have had rates in the past that we've developed either off of Planning Director discretion for standalone commercial centers in commercial areas. Or what our ordinance directs us to do is go into our parking table and find the closest possible, the closest use type, and then use that. And in this case, we did do that. We used the closest type of use, which in the zoning standards in 29406 is schools, which serve children under age 16. And that standard is two spaces per classroom or one space per four seats in an auditorium. There is no auditorium here. And based on the floor plan and the operations or the operational information that was given to us, we could at least conclude that there was one main classroom in terms of function for this. So, there are two parking spaces in the driveway in the front. So, those would satisfy that parking standard. So, yeah, if you did look in our standards, you would not find a daycare center or a childcare center specific parking standard. So, we had to kind of go off of the operations and how things worked. And again, the site that you can see there, Burnett, the driveway, the driveway has really two main spaces. So, you can expect that on any given time during drop-off or pickup, traffic could accumulate on either side of Burnett or extend out of the driveway possibly. So, with that, I can answer any questions the board might have, but that is the summary of our findings. So, I can answer any questions you might have for me at this time if you wish.
Questions?
Justin, under the prior special home occupation permit, I think I'm reading in here correctly, the max number was six children?
Yep, that is correct. I pulled that too. That was from the one issued in 2004.
It says less than six. So, that would be five. Max is five.
Right.
And under this, their max would be?
The description that was given to staff was that they can have anywhere from eight to 14, depending on school year versus summer. They are licensed as a C2 provider under the state of Iowa, and that is within the state parameters for a number of children. But yes, correct, the original special home occupancy was less than six.
Other questions?
Not right now.
Okay. Could I just get clarification on one point? So, they don't reside in the home, so they don't qualify for a home occupation permit, even if the number was low enough?
That's correct. A special home occupation permit requires the owner of the business or the operator of the business to reside at the home.
Okay. And then on the residential zone standards in the staff report, that you're concluding they're not met because there isn't someone living in the home? Or is that an actual requirement of this special use permit, that someone resides in the home?
So, a special use permit does not require that someone resides in the home.
Okay. But there's no supplemental standard that would?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. So, it's just, staff's conclusion is that's just typical of these types of residential style?
Exactly. So, the seeking of the special use permit is due to the fact that they do not live in the home.
Okay. What's, I should maybe know this, but what's the limit on traffic for a home occupation? Is it 10 trips?
Yeah, I believe it's, I don't have those right in front of me. I believe it's possibly 10 trips, and I think that's per day.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. All right. Other questions for staff? Okay. Now, it is time for the applicant to speak to their request. Sure. Thanks. If you could please state your name and address?
Sure. My name is Jessica Watson-Cliver, and I reside at 2550 Year Street.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth? Thank you.
So, I kind of had made this huge packet to show you how amazing my program is. And then I was kind of digging a little bit deeper into Justin's proposal, and I really wanted to not waste time and just focus on what the issue is at hand. And so, obviously, from what Justin has said and in the report, the issue is parking. And so, I've kind of come up with a couple of solutions to kind of let you know that it can, doesn't have to be a big issue in order to continue doing care. Right now, we can care for 16 children at a time per the state licensing, which we have 16 children enrolled currently. Typically, there's no more than 14 a day, and that depends on the day and the time. Typically, our children arrive between about 8:15 and 9:30, and that's 12 families. And some of the families have two children that arrive at the same time, which makes a little bit less traffic, right? Since there's two children in each car for the 14 kids that are arriving for the day. We do have the two parking spots available, which per the parking standard of our one classroom meets that. And so, I think where the issue lies is when there happens to be maybe an extra car that's dropping off prior to one leaving. And so, my suggestion to that is I can have our clients come at a specific time in order to make sure that we're just using those two parking spots and not parking on the street, since that seems to be the main issue. And that's really it. So, we've talked kind of about just having a staggering pickup and drop-off time. And if that doesn't work, we could even do an alternate pickup or drop-off location. I have a 10-person van that I purchased specifically to help our program, and so we would be able to do that as well. But I really don't think that should be necessary. We have the two parking spots available. So, just with a little bit of tweaking for drop-off and pickup times, we could make it work. We have been operating a childcare in the home. Justin mentioned that I inherited the business. My mother was the original owner. And so, I kind of just, when she retired, I just kind of took over. And we only moved about two and a half years ago, and it's my bad, I didn't realize we needed to get an alternate permit for not living in the home. The main reason we moved was accessibility for my husband, who is an amputee, and it was going to cost thousands upon thousands of dollars to kind of make that fit to where he would be comfortable in the home. So, that's what prompted our move, but I didn't realize we needed to change the permit for that. So, yeah.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
When your mom was running the daycare, did you have as many kids or has the program grown throughout the years?
The program has grown due to the need in Story County. I mean, I'm continuing to get calls every day and having to tell people, no, there's not, I don't have any available spots. And so, just actually in May is when we kind of, we almost doubled in size, and that's probably where our traffic came from. And we became a C2 home and then enrolled some additional children at that time because of the need.
But by Iowa law, you're allowed to have?
I'm allowed to have 16 total with my co-provider, who's my husband.
But you said you had eight until May of 2020?
Correct. Correct. Until May of this year, I'm sorry. 2021, May of this year.
Okay. And you don't have any plans to reduce in size?
No. I mean, it doesn't seem feasible for a community that it's in such a great need right now. I don't want to. I should say that. I don't want to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll have another opportunity to speak after public testimony.
Okay.
And we might have more questions then. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, it's time for members of the public to provide testimony. There are a lot of you. And so, I'm going to suggest we keep a time of three minutes per comment, and I'll keep a timer up here. So, if the first person would like to approach the podium, I'll ask your name and your address and swear you in. Oh, yeah, and your orange cards. Thank you.
My name is Brian Keat, and I live at 3106 Stockbury. Here are names.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
If I could, I'm going to start real quick by reading a statement that my nine-year-old Max wrote, because he didn't want to get up and speak. He got a little nervous. So, "Why We Should Keep Daycare. My name is Maxwell Keat. I live on 3106 Stockbury Street. I've gone to explore and more since 2013, and eight years isn't all I want. So, please, please let Jessica keep the daycare. Thank you." Short and sweet. As I said, my name's Brian Keat, I live at 3106 Stockbury. My children have attended daycare at 2109 Burnett since 2013. We're currently the most senior family. We've had many wonderful friends come and go in the very long time that we've attended this daycare at this location as a part of this neighborhood. We have seen the neighbors next door come and go along with neighbors across the street all the while. Since 2004, the daycare has been a compatible and harmonious part of this neighborhood. We waved to the neighbors. We talk with the neighbors. We push snow with the neighbors. This daycare has been part of this neighborhood for 17 years. The only two differences are Jessica and Jermaine do not sleep there and the fact that someone new has moved to the neighborhood and decided that what has gone on for nearly 20 years does not fit with the neighborhood. I've read the code. I understand the criteria. Main concerns relate to parking, the harmonious nature of the activity, and the residency requirement. As to the parking, everything in the report assumes the conditions rather than observing. So, I would argue that it's maybe not going to be as bad as folks think. As to the nature of the activities, you will hear the sounds of children playing at this wonderful play-based daycare that serves all ethnicities, socio-economic statuses, and viewpoints. As to the residency requirement, I understand the concept of not having a commercial operation in a residential neighborhood, but this is a daycare run out of a single-family residence, not a commercial facility, and I would argue that along with our children, Jessica and Jermaine do an awful lot of living in this home. I urge you to find a pathway to approve this permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm next. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay. Forgot to set my timer. Yeah. Name and address, please?
Matt Woodward, 2004 Burnett.
And do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I live across the street at 2004 Burnett for 16 years. I know Jessica well and Jermaine well, and I knew their mother very well. It's a fantastic residence. It's a fantastic business. It supports our community in ways that aren't in our community very well. Childcare is a huge deal in our town, and a lot of ways is not being addressed. So, for parking issues, it seems silly to upsell 12, 13, counting Jermaine and Jessica's families because we can't talk and communicate about parking. I myself could be part of this problem. If I park my truck three and a half feet too far forward, the next morning when they're dropping off, I may be the problem. So, maybe if we talk about how we structure our parking and not count number of trips down the street as use or usage of a residential area, we could do better and serve many, many families in our community rather than possibly displacing many. Can't agree more with how that home is a home. And for a few months now, people haven't lived there at nighttime, and that's it, just at nighttime. The property is kept up. The property is taken care of. The property is addressed. I can cite an example of a few months back when a stray dog was in our neighborhood. I was woken up by the barking. I was able to get in touch with Jess by phone call, by communication, and assured that it wasn't in her backyard. And so, it was, and if she lived there or she did not, it was addressed. They're in touch with their property at all times. They take care of their property at all times, and I know this because I live across the street. I highly recommend the council consider communication over staunch rules. Thanks.
Thank you. Name and address?
My name is Chris Gross, and I live at 2303 Clark Avenue.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yeah. I didn't have anything prepared or anything, but I'm sort of speaking on behalf of the childcare providers. the childcare providers in the area too, um, about the need for childcare. And you probably know that it's a tremendous need. Um, like Jess said, she gets calls, I get calls all the time. I have parents begging me to take their kids um and go over rates or ratios. And um you just can't do that. Um, the need is there, and if this is not granted to her, that's gonna make other families suffer and make it an even worse issue. Also, like Matt mentioned, if you're looking at just traffic down the street or on the street, I have neighbors myself that come and go 20, 30 times a day. And that just, I sort of laughed when you guys were talking about that, I didn't quite understand what that all meant. But um, you know, and neighbors that have cars parked on their, I know for a fact on that street alone, there's a specific family who has cars parked in their driveway for six years and they haven't moved. So something should be done about that versus the comings and goings of daycare families on the street. Because those, those cars don't stay there and they move. Um, she's more than willing to work on the traffic and like Matt said too, the communication part on the traffic would be um something to try first. I, I urge you to work with her on this and not have another daycare. It's not even a center, the numbers might qualify that, but it's a home, it's a home based daycare. And that's what's quality. She runs a quality program. I'm impressed by what she does and um more people need to strive to be like her when, when they run. She does more than just daycare stuff, she's just an all around good person, so you've gotta work with her on this.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, name and address?
Hi, I'm Brenda Barton and my address is 1389 W Avenue. Here are names. I am here in support of.
Oh, sorry, one second.
Explore More Learning Center.
Could you hold on one second?
Sure.
Could you, uh, sorry, refrain from the applause at the end of each, it's causing some feedback in our broadcasting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I, I have to swear you in. So do the name and the address again, cuz I.
Okay. My name is Brenda Barton and my address is 1389 W Avenue. Here are names.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I am in support of Explore More Learning Center. I'm grateful to have found affordable, quality childcare for my grandson. This is not easy in Ames and should be considered. I'm grateful that my grandson attends a progressive, diverse childcare home, progressive in the philosophy that play is the work of childhood. We actually need more childcare options like this in Ames. And if Ames is truly trying to build a more diverse and inclusive community. My first day taking my grandson, I had a hard time finding Explore More. Why? Because it looks just like every other house in the neighborhood. This home has served as a childcare home for 20 years. This home has been a valued part of the neighborhood for 20 years and not only provides a vital community service for many of Ames families, but this home is the livelihood of Jessica and her family. Jessica runs a tight ship and maintains all of the certifications necessary for running and in-home childcare. The city of Ames needs to encourage and maybe even make an exception for this type of business that provides an invaluable community service. I hope that you use your authority to see the benefit of this to, to this neighborhood and to the larger community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Are there? Okay. Name and address, please?
Hi, my name is John Misra. I live at 2606 Northwood Drive, also in the neighborhood.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Uh, I didn't have a prepared statement. Uh, I just have my, uh, my family here, my son and my daughter have been with uh Ms. Jessica for the last five years. Uh, when we were looking for daycare, we were, uh, we were desperate to find somebody, we were calling places, uh, you know, places were full, places were full. We both work. Um, and we were able to, we got a phone call back from, from Jessica. She said, hey, I do have uh an opening for you and it's been just the best five years uh that we've had. She's, she's really looked after our kids and she's, she's excellent at what she does. You know, if, if there's anything, you know, like she follows, if she knows about it, she follows the book, you know, to the rules. I think she has a QRS score of four, um, which is the Iowa daycare uh quality rating system. And uh, you know, that's, that's fairly involved. Uh, it's a lot more planning than I, goes into my day. And uh, she does it, she does it all the time and she has a, a great personal touch. And you know, really, really uh, you know, continues strive, meaning to have continued education and really hone her craft. I would, it would be a real shame if we were to lose that. Is that everything, Evie? Is that good? Oh, and also there is uh another benefit is that there is a school, uh, you know, down the street, you can see if you're orient yourself on Burnett and you're looking down the slide, uh, down on the slide, uh, there's Meeker Elementary right there. And I don't know if that's um something that uh, you know, may be contributing to traffic or if there's a concern there, but uh, um, you'll have to write, you'll have to come up on your own, honey. This is, this is, this is my time. So uh, it's, it's, that's, that, I've just uh, I have nothing but great things to say uh about her and uh, you know, certainly uh, my kids have grown so much better and grown so much uh under her care. Thank you.
Other members of the audience wishing to speak?
Hi. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Name and address, please?
Hi, my name's Janet McCurry and I live at 1819 Douglas Ave, here in Ames.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I sure do.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, I guess I honestly didn't want to say much, but besides agreeing with just working with Jessica, I live very close and am able to walk my son as much as I can to daycare to help eliminate such things, cuz I too live right next to Meeker and I myself deal with people parking on the streets when they're trying to pick up their kids from Meeker. So I totally understand the concern with traffic when it comes to things like that. And communication is a huge key. So if we can just all be adults and work together and focus on properly parking and being efficient as a team, then there should be no more issues besides just watching out for kids. I think that's about it. Thanks.
One more.
I am um a mother who does have different vehicles that helps me. So if I don't take my son, my husband would. So it's a different vehicle. So it may look like many different vehicles, but it's just the same family and a different transportation. So that might confuse them and think lots more. Um, and because we do live in the neighborhood, we do sometimes drive those blocks, so that could add to some confusion as well. Um, once in a while, I'll have a grandparent who has a truck, it's huge, they can't park that truck in even their own driveway. So that might, once in a while, cause an issue. So as long as I can pass on communication with parking there, hopefully we can work as a team. So that is all. Thank you.
Name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Melissa Heffern, I live at 453 Seventh Street. Here are names.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
My son goes to Jessica's daycare and he absolutely loves it. Every night he's like, Jessica, even on the eve rings, he loves it. We would be devastated if she was forced to close. We love that she's good with the kids, she lets them play, she doesn't force any worksheets or any, they learn great. Every kid loves it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public wish to speak? Okay, seeing no one moving towards the microphone, I'll close the public hearing. Um, now it is time for the applicant and staff to provide concluding summaries. I forget which, who we start with, but I think it's the applicant. Um, so if you'd like to add anything, and we might have some more questions for you. I do. Great. All right.
First, if I can just say thank you. Um, I really do love what I do. And um, again, it's just this one thing that I feel really isn't that big of a deal. I mean, we serve, we have served hundreds of children and families throughout this tw, our 20-year thing. And it's like, I may not have to close right if you don't issue me this permit, but I will be able to help fewer and fewer families. And so that's, my goal is to help as many families as I can with developmentally appropriate, appropriate programming, um, which doesn't include forced circle time and forced handwriting and all of that jazz for kids who are not ready for it yet. Um, and so um, hopefully through my testimony and my amazing clients, you can see that this, they're willing to um work within the guidelines of the permit.
Thanks. Questions for the applicant?
Of the, of the kids that you have, how many are there just before, before and after school care? So they drop them off and then if they go to Meeker, you take them over there and then you pick them up after school?
So we actually uh did a one full year of virtual learning. Um, so we didn't actually go, I mean, we had school in, in our program this year of, for COVID. So I had three children enrolled at Meeker. Um, coming up um in the fall, one will be at Meeker. And then we will have four or five that will be enrolled at Northwood in the morning. And so typically that bus drops them right off. And so actually, parents will more than likely drop the children off at school, thus reducing the, the traffic in the morning. And also they would be bussed and dropped off at um, right at the house after school um in the af, well, not in the afternoon, just before lunch, cuz they go to the morning program. And then typically in the fall, um, once uh school starts, we, we all walk over to Meeker to pick up the kids. And typically we play on the playground until it's time for pickup. Um, so a lot of the kids are actually picked up from the park and then, you know, when there's like 15 minutes or so left, we'll walk back and the, the last few kids will get picked up at the house. And um, in the morning, we've actually, well, we've kind of stopped the last week or so, but we, cuz it's so hot, we'll walk over to Meeker and play in the morning, um, where half of the kids will get dropped off there versus dropped off at the house too.
Just to clarify, so you said four to five go to Northwood?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So this has been in existence for 20 years, correct?
Correct.
Have you started getting repeat where the parents used to go there?
Um, not quite, but um, I have been involved with the Boys and Girls Club my entire life and um, not my entire life, but since I was seven. And um, I actually have s, staff that work there now in the audience, I care for her child. And also um, kids that I um was involved with that were in my teen programming and stuff, I have cared for their children, their children. Um, some, some of the um, i- it's kind of crazy, every, almost everyone is in our, our program is like someone who knows someone who either my mom or I have cared for or in the neighborhood or of a friend of a friend. And so um, we're all pretty, pretty close group. We do, um, we just had a beach day at Fri, on Friday and we haven't been together like that since um Christmas of 2019. And so um, we're a pretty close group and everyone just kind of knows, knows everyone.
Have you been approached by any neighbors that have really given you any negative feedback as far as traffic or?
I haven't. And so that's what kind of like threw me for a loop when I got, when I got the letter, cuz I, you'd think that, that could have been, hey, you know, this is going on, maybe someone was parked in front of their house, I'm not sure. But I just feel like that communication, as Matt said, um, would have alleviated the, the problem, cuz we would have just fixed, we would have just fixed it before now.
I had the opportunity to, opportunity to go out past the area today. And I have to admit that when I drove by, I couldn't tell, you know, I, I knew which house I was looking for, but there was nothing outwardly that made it look any different than any other house in the neighborhood. I did have a question related to that. Uh, I noticed that there was a garage and I, I noticed your white van parked in front of the garage. Is the garage operable?
It is. And so that, that is another solution we kind of threw around. We, we are currently using that space. Um, the children each have a personal cubby in the garage and then we also do use that space for eating sometimes too. Um, if we had to take that away, we, we could, but it's just an additional um thing that if we, we spend most of our time outside. Um, and so like uh, when it's raining or something, we eat lunch in the garage or even, man, every day. We, we eat lunch in the garage and out, and outside. And so um, taking that space away would kind of stink, but if it helps, then, you know, we could do it. Um, we did also consider like, it's so weird with this whole parking situation because in the, in the report, it says that our, my clients, two minutes of parking on the street is taking away from public parking, but because I don't live there, I can't park supposedly on the street, but I could park on a street over and walk? Right? So there's more space in my driveway? You know, so I don't um, I don't quite get that part of it. But we're just, like I said, just willing to do what we, what we need to do, so we're in compliance, so.
So you do park the van in the driveway?
I do.
And that's what you and your husband drive to the daycare?
Correct.
In the morning?
Right.
That's the car you take? Okay. Other questions? You all took mine.
That doesn't happen very often.
I know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, now it's time for any questions for staff. I have one. Can you park on both sides of Burnett?
Believe you can here, yes.
Thank you.
Justin, did you get any public feedback? I know you provided it, but you didn't get any negative? Um, no, like I said, I had the, the two inquiries uh by phone and then we received the uh letter that we gave to you. Um, I have not received any other feedback either way.
Okay. Other questions? Um, as you all know, we have staff's recommendation and if um the board wishes to make its own findings, um, then you would need to go through each of staff's findings, the criteria's not met, and come up with alternative findings just to guide our discussion, depending on where we're headed.
Well, basically, we only have, if we wanna go with approving a variance, we just have to do the two findings where they said that it didn't.
I think there's four, yeah.
Two are.
The, the similar.
Same.
They're similar. Mm-hmm. Can we go?
Four, but two are the same.
I think we probably all agree to start going through them?
Sure.
Yes. Motion first.
Do we need a motion too?
We need a motion first, right?
I think.
I'd prefer to have a motion and then discuss.
Okay.
But we don't always do that.
You have to have a motion to discuss, is that the motion?
Do a motion.
On the, we have to have a motion on.
Then you can discuss.
I'll move, what is it? I'll move alternative number two. I think it is, I'll second that.
Let me read it, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Okay, so there is a motion for alternative two, which is approval by Bowers and a second by Shepah. Let's discuss, starting with general standard two. That the use be designed, constructed, operated and maintained to be harmonious. That the use be designed, constructed, operated and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with existing intended character and general vicinity. The use will not change the essential character of the area in which it is proposed.
So my instinct from reading staff report was that, you know, we're looking at this as more of a commercial operation than a residential that's operating daycare as it was formerly. I'll tell you, when I read the report, I'm like, no. Because it is changing the nature of it, because it's not an owner occupied daycare. I understand all the arguments, the need, all that stuff. But I think that on the other hand, we have an issue of if there is nonconformity or a serious concern about it, I haven't heard any tonight. You know, if it, and this isn't my neighborhood. I don't live there. If I really had a concern and I was a neighbor, you know, I would make sure that was voiced. Do I still have a concern about turning a residential into what I would consider more of a commercial property? Yeah, because there's a reason that things are zoned residential. But on the other hand, if it's not really changing the nature, there's no strong objection by any neighbors. It seems like the default should be that, well, then it is harmonious. It's not for us then to decide otherwise.
Correct. The testimony we heard supports that it's.
Well, I don't think it's even the testimony that I heard. It's the testimony I didn't hear.
Okay.
Well, and that's me. I'm sitting here going, okay, if this is a problem in this neighborhood, then people should show up, even if it's contrary to what everybody else is saying, you know? I believe that you need to stand up and say something. You can't just complain about it on the backside and then not so. Could it be non-harmonious? Yeah, it definitely could be. Could it be a concern that it's more commercial than residential at this point? Yes. Apparently, it's not creating that big a problem.
Well, I have a couple other thoughts on that same point. And that's just in in terms of the the staff report itself and and what we heard tonight on whether or not it's harmonious. The the first conclusion of the staff report is appearance of the site is that of a residential house, which can be expected in a residential area. If you stop at that point, that's harmonious with the neighborhood. And that's what I saw today when I drove by there and sat outside that house for a couple of minutes, looking and observing the neighborhood, was a residential house and a residential neighborhood. I think the rest of this, we can maybe address in another area. But I don't think it fits that. I don't think the rest of this argument that's in this conclusion fits in whether or not it's harmonious in the neighborhood, in my opinion.
I agree. I don't think whether someone resides in there or not should be regarded in the if the if the facility is harmonious with the neighborhood.
The only thing you can hang it on is it it does say operated. You know, we have design, constructed and maintained. Okay, it's a house. It looks like a house. Is it operated as a residence anymore? No.
But it
But it hasn't been.
It directly supports the residences in the neighborhood.
I'm not saying that there's not value. I'm just saying it's it is a it's being used commercially.
I get it.
Well, it depends on how abstract you you look at that, because having those children living there during the day, it's like.
Well, she could have 14 kids, too. I don't think she wants 14 kids, but.
And the only difference is they're not sleeping there.
I, on the operated point, I did think about that, too. And I do feel like in home, this isn't in home, daycares, daycare centers directly support residential uses and their need in neighborhoods, especially neighborhoods that have schools directly less than a block nearby.
Right. But that's why the previous special home occupation permit was approved, because no problem, it's clearly fits within. Was there even a hearing on it at that point, or was it staff approved back in 2004?
There was a board of adjustment here.
There was a board of adjustment here? Okay.
So the only problem is that they don't physically live there.
That's why they're going for a special use permit like this.
Yeah, and I don't think there there'd probably be further limitations if they live there, because they wouldn't have the room to have that many kids. I mean, it's kind of a.
Yeah, the special home act did have that under six.
Chicken and egg issue a little bit, because.
Here's what I've written down. Based on testimony, also, the appearance of a house looking like a house as found by staff. The the fact that the resident, the board has found that the lack of a resident has not changed the character of the use and the use directly supports the area's residential character.
So that's how you'd modify it?
I'll give you my.
Finding of facts.
Yeah. Okay.
And I'll say that concerns me more than traffic.
Yeah.
Because I did look at it. I Googled it just to see how close, and it's that close to the elementary school. And it's like, I'm sure every day they're backed out on the, what's the cross street? Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I've dealt with it myself in different capacities. And there's a method to the madness that you can reduce it, but.
The next standard that is not met was that the use does not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment or conditions of operation which are detrimental to any person, property or general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare or odors. So really just traffic in this instance.
I think on this, it's the conclusion is may. I don't think we have any concrete evidence either way that it has. The only concern I have is the van. Because that does limit the ability of people to park. And it's getting picky here without blocking the sidewalk. So I think that needs to be fixed somehow, some way. Don't take that as gospel right now.
A smaller car.
Well, no, I think there.
Sorry.
Um. This opens other cans of worms. Because there's room, it looks like there where the van could be parked.
I'm concerned about creating a condition if that's where you're headed.
Right.
How do we actually enforce that?
Well, I mean, there it's pretty easy that either the van's not parked there, it's parked there.
Well, but planning staff.
Right. Well, I mean, it's, it's like any other condition that you put on it. It gets enforced, usually reported or not reported. I don't expect staff to drive around and check on them all.
I guess I'll take a different approach and see.
I'm just discussing.
Yeah, no, I I see what you're saying about the van. And I guess I'll just take a different approach and and say that I'm not sure that I even agree. When you look at this versus the traffic that backs up at Meeker and probably backs up from Meeker, is this house really going to cause that much different traffic than what they're already seeing in the neighborhood from that is? This is really exacerbating the problem. And I just don't see that it is, in my opinion. I, I, I don't, I don't see a finding of fact that there is a problem. There, there's a statement in here, a conclusion in here that there is a problem. But I disagree with the conclusion of staff. I'll say it outright. I disagree with the conclusion.
Well, I'm not saying that, yeah, I'm saying that the public school probably just gets a pass on it. Not, I'm not saying staff does. I'm just saying from the fact of public.
Yeah.
Nuisance issue. It's like, yeah, it just happens because there's an elementary school there.
But is it enough to cause?
Excessive.
Excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare or odors. And I don't disagree, or I don't agree that it is.
No, I don't see the traffic in that technical aspect. I was just thinking more because there is the issue of parking.
We're not there yet, though.
I know, but I'm just, that's, yeah, the traffic I'm not necessarily concerned about.
Yeah.
So this specific Article Six, I also, Rob, don't agree. It's just traffic and it says may not does exceed, therefore I don't agree that to, that it does not meet it if it's a maybe.
Yeah, some facts I wrote down from the testimony. The morning peak is probably closer to eight. Because you've got 12 families, four to five go to Northwood. So that's not 16, that's eight. That's half. That's about what the daycare has been operating at since 2006.
No, you would say the peaks probably pick up in the afternoon.
Yeah, so the peak in the afternoon is bigger.
Northwood.
Yeah.
Well, some of that could be resolved by escorting the kids in, and then the parents don't have to get out and take the kid up and be parked there longer. As a, as a remedy.
And who's to say they're all going to show up? You said five to 5:15?
So I told that 5:15, I have children picked up. I have one family that leaves at 3:30, one that leaves at 4:15, 4:30. So it's not like all 12 families are not parked at one time at 5:15.
Question for you. Do you charge late pickup?
Questions during?
I know. I know. Just clarifying. We're just trying to get this, trying to get this figured out.
Following procedure.
We're only allowed to speak to each other during this time.
All right. Could be that they all show up at once, but not likely.
There's always a possibility.
Based on testimony, it does not sound like they all show up at once. And that the provider may be interested in creating a staggered schedule in the future.
Yes. If they don't already.
That works.
Okay, so what I wrote was, given the area has a school, it's not an excessive amount of traffic. And based on testimony, the morning peak is likely around eight. The afternoon peak might be closer to 12 with the families, but pickup does not occur at the same time. And the provider has indicated she's looking at a staggered schedule. Sorry. I'm gonna give you my report after this. Okay. Okay.
Article one under residential zone standards.
This is again, not create excessively high levels of traffic than the predominant pattern in the area. Not.
So higher than the school?
Yeah, not create additional traffic from the proposed use that would change the street classification. And such traffic shall not lower the level of service at any intersections. I do not believe a traffic study was completed to find this was affecting the level of service or impacting the intersection.
Cut and paste the other one.
Yeah. I would, in my opinion, I would, I would consider that the predominant pattern in the area is the school. Therefore, this would not even come close to the levels of traffic of the predominant pattern, let alone create higher levels of traffic.
Yeah, and even if the use was going to change the level of service or, you know, at the street or the intersection, I don't know if it would be because of this use or because of the school.
Right.
I think we can peg it.
We wouldn't know. And this only works because of the proximity to the school.
Good addition. So given the predominant pattern and with the school proximity, we found that this was met.
I don't think it would ever block the intersection.
Yeah. And the, I think the testimony is saying that the backup isn't necessarily occurring at the intersections. It's just.
Are there south?
Yeah. Okay.
There's one more, right?
Two, not create a noticeably different travel pattern than the predominant pattern in the area. Special attention must be shown to deliveries or service trips in a residential zone that are different than the normal to and from work pattern in the residential area. While I think the peak pickup and drop off times correspond to and from work patterns in the area, and the schools pick up and drop off times, too.
Yeah, most generally, the neighbors would be leaving at the same time.
Or coming home at the same time.
And there's no, there's no evidence of any deliveries.
We didn't.
Service trips.
We didn't ask about.
Ask, but are we allowed to?
I don't think it was.
No. Wasn't in that report.
Do we know what time the elementary opens? What time they start class?
I assume the elementary starts at eight.
No. Are we able to?
No, it's all right.
No, I don't think.
It's within the same, same range.
Yeah.
It's gonna be in that neighborhood.
Yeah, I don't think it's creating different patterns. It's not like there's, she closes at five. It's not like there's daycare until 10:00 PM at night.
Right.
No, schools allow it for them.
Yeah.
We will say that the traffic meets the regular travel pattern.
Yep. So given school pickup and drop off times and normal eight to five workday. Use is same, I'm just making that notes. The use is the same pattern in time as the school and eight to five workday. So the travel pattern's not changed.
Now the parking space.
Okay. Yes.
But that's what it.
We do number two?
Yeah, we did number two. We did number two.
Okay, but then that addresses the parking spaces.
Staff's conclusion is the owner claims three parking spaces are provided. This involves parking in the driveway and on the street. Potential for parking on the street creates safety hazards. Any parking on the street is not permitted, as special use permits must demonstrate that parking can be contained on the street in order to avoid safety risks of additional traffic on abutting streets and reducing public parking on abutting streets. Well.
Concerned about it at all, or we just say, nope? Or somewhat, and drop off and pick off needs to occur in the driveway?
I'm not concerned about it.
No.
As I said, I drove through that neighborhood earlier today and saw another home that had three or four cars in front of it, three cars side by side in a two stall, in a two double wide driveway, and another car, I've never seen this in all my life of patrolling streets in Ames of 37 years law enforcement. I saw a car parallel parked across the driveway, up against the three cars that were up against the, the garage doors, so that it wasn't blocking, at least it wasn't blocking the sidewalk, which you were asked about. But that, to me, was one of the oddest things I've seen in a neighborhood in a long time. If you're trying to talk about something that, in my opinion, would detract from a neighborhood, that certainly, and I'm.
Don't drive by my house, then.
Your concern is that because of the van, people would be parking over the sidewalk?
And this
And.
Common courtesy, you can't park on the sidewalk, correct? So.
Well, that is against, it's against code.
It is.
There is a code.
But I mean, just.
Right. So I don't, yeah, I don't think it's, it's for us to.
I think based on them having one classroom and being required to have two parking spaces, and there are two parking spaces provided, we can require no more than that and conclude the standard's met.
Right. But do the parking spaces have to be parking spaces that can be occupied by the van? Or do they need to be available for that? Doesn't matter.
It doesn't specify.
Okay.
Two parking spaces are needed, two parking spaces are provided.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have a problem if they pull up coming southbound and the kids jump in the passenger side and then they leave.
Think that's the traffic.
Takes 10, takes 10 seconds. Not, I don't want them running across the street and getting in the other side. They can pull up southbound on Burnett, get in the passenger side and go.
Okay.
I don't know why, I just said that for fun.
And a reminder that parking over the sidewalk is illegal.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
No parking on the, on the sidewalk.
And I do think they drive around looking for that, too. Because there's been parking in my neighborhood and. Because there's been parking in my neighborhood and I'm about as far south and east as you can go.
Okay, did we miss any? Were there just four?
Yeah, it was those four.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, um, and I was just gonna add to it with any decision that you make, you can, like we were just talking, you can put conditions on.
Right, that's what I was meaning.
Anything, but just just bear in mind that it has good parameters on it.
Yeah.
It's something that can be, even if it's not, if it's just my complaint, it's enforceable that, okay, it's this provision and the condition.
Most of my comments were for public edification.
I know, I know. I I, if you wanted to offer a condition about the van, you could. I just am concerned about calling out particular vehicles that can be or cannot be in the driveway. That's all. I think we had a similar home business permit like that.
Not that concerned about it, just-
Okay, okay.
Comments for public edification.
So we, I think we've are done discussing.
Since we already made a motion, are we?
So we can just have a roll call vote. Everybody remember what the motion was?
Yes.
Great.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, the motion is declared approved. Any person desiring to appeal this decision to a court of record may do so within 30 days after the filing of this decision. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a request for a variance to allow a wall sign on a building with no street frontage in the SSMD South Lincoln Sub Area Mixed Use District at 119 Washington Avenue. I love these zoning designations.
Yeah, there's a-
Okay, good evening. Um, I'm Ray Anderson with the Planning and Housing Department. This is a request for a variance for a wall sign um, at 119 Washington Avenue in this zoning district, uh, which is the um, South Lincoln Sub Area Mixed Use District. It allows one wall sign for street frontage. And um, as you can see in on the uh, aerial on the screen there, uh, this abuts two alleys and it's addressed as Washington Avenue, but it does not abut Washington Avenue. It used to abut Washington Avenue many years ago. Um, it was platted as uh, two lots that uh, abutted Washington Avenue and then it was divided north-south instead of east-west and the one parcel ended up without street frontage.
Wondered how that happened.
And that was many years ago. So the request is to allow one wall sign on this uh, building. Uh, this will be a banquet hall. It's a conversion of a building uh, of a business that was there. Uh, it was an auto repair business and uh, the uh, funeral home to the north across the alley purchased this building and they want to use it as a place for family and friends to gather following funeral services and also uh, as a venue for other occasions as So they uh, are requesting the variance to allow the one wall sign even though there's not street frontage. Um, it's it's a rather unique situation that it doesn't have street frontage. Um, you know, the other businesses in this uh, vicinity in this zone, they all have street frontage and so the 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 wall sign is not a problem. But um, uh, in this case, they don't have the street frontage. What you're not approving tonight is you're not approving anything about the sign itself. You're not approving the dimensions or the content, you know, the message or anything with the sign. It's just a variance to allow one wall sign. Um, and in your report, they show that that wall sign would be of a north uh, building Uh, there are criteria, as you know, uh, to uh, meet, to grant it a variance and those are in the addendum of your report and we have findings of fact and conclusions by staff. And in this particular case, we believe they meet all of the criteria, which to be granted a variance, they, that's a requirement that they meet all of the criteria and in this case, we believe they do. And so our recommendation as staff is for approval of the variance as described in alternative one in your report. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I do have one quick question. If this wasn't a sign we were talking about and they wanted to go out and do some kind of uh, mural or something like that that gave the same message as a sign, would that be controlled at all by city code in any way?
That I would have to check with the inspections division because they actually administer the sign regulations-
Okay.
-in the planning department.
I was just curious.
Uh, but but in this, in this particular case, in this zone, in the zoning ordinance, it uh, it does have the the regulation about a wall sign.
Okay, thank you.
A mural, I I have checked with them.
So so it probably has definition of size in that code?
Uh, in in the uh, zoning district, it says 16 square feet.
16 square feet.
Maximum.
Other questions? Okay.
Who wrote this? Because anyway.
Um.
Just take this off.
All right, now it's time for the applicant to speak to their request then. Thanks, Ray.
Take that. First street. Yeah. Right on here. You have two streets and you can get two signs. Come on. With your own three streets. Go.
Tim Grandin, 2851 Monroe Drive, here in Ames.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Kim and I own the funeral home to the north. We have purchased the property to the south. And when we were in front of the city council for shared parking, if we would have known this would have been a challenge, we would have asked then. And I think they probably would have said, yes, you need a sign. Okay? Can't swear to that, but I'm just saying that's probably a pretty good fact, okay? The other thing I'm going to say is I think that you can look, and Ray touched on this, there's probably not another interior lot in that district. And we have removed probably, I can show you the pictures, probably 60 feet of signage on the north, the the west, and the east. And if you want to see that, I'd be more than happy to put it on the on the slide for you to see. But we've removed that and we just want to place, so if there's an emergency, fire and rescue knows where to go. It needs to have the address on it and um, the sign we have proposed fits all that criteria.
Okay.
Okay? Any questions? I'll be happy to show you pictures if you want to see pictures, but I don't need to waste your time.
I think we're good.
We believe you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, I will open the public hearing and, well, we do have one member in our audience. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this request? Okay, close the public hearing. Further questions for the applicant or staff?
I would like to make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Go ahead.
That's second.
Go ahead. Ron can second.
Oh, Ron, got it.
All right.
I just seconded the last one.
Oh, okay.
Motion by, I'm gonna give it to Bowers.
Okay.
By Bowers.
Well, we did the first one. They can do the second one.
Okay, if there's no discussion, we can have a roll call vote. Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion is declared approved. Any person desiring to appeal this decision to a court of record may do so within 30 days after the filing of this decision. Okay, that's it.
Motion dismissed.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion dismissed.
Discussion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Same sign. Okay, we're dismissed. Yep, this thing.
[Music]